This is a regular meeting of Commissioners' Court. I'd like to welcome all of you here. As we call it to order this morning, we're going to have the preacher from the North Woodlands Area Church of Christ, James Lindeman, lead the invocation. So if you would stand for that and then remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. James?
Please pray with me. Father, it's an honor to be able to come together and to speak about the affairs at hand. Lord, you ask us to love you with all of our hearts, soul, mind, and strength, and to love others as ourselves. God, you command us to do this. And what a beautiful opportunity to love you and love one another as we examine and discuss matters that affect one another. Lord, I pray for wisdom. I pray for discernment, God, and justice, God, that there would be concern for the interests of one another, that we would be able to treat one another with kindness, and that, Lord, we would be able to resolve business in a way that brings you honor and glory. Let us remember, Father, that it's not all about this world, but that at all times, we need to be aware and conscious of our actions before you, our eternal judge. We love you, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? Are there any public comments? If there are, would you please come to the podium and state your name? Mayor Maggie Bobo White?
Thank you. Happy almost St. Patrick's Day on the 17th, by the way. I frequently come and thank the Commissioners' Court and the county. I usually mention Roden Bridge and law enforcement, but I neglect to mention all the others. Every single county office helps the city of B-Dies, and I just want to say thank you to Becky Duff's office and to certainly Ron Fultz and Cory helping me out, and John Fultz and Cory and Sherry. And B-Dies, a little town like B-Dies, just could not operate without the expertise of all county officials, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Mary Ann Waters, Texas Assessor Collector?
This Thursday is the stew supper at St. Joseph's Catholic Church.
The what supper?
Stew supper.
Stew supper.
And we'll be serving, starting at about 6:00. This goes for our altar society. We use this as our only fundraiser for the year that we use to take care of the altar, flowers, and stuff in the church each year. So if you guys, and we also do other projects as well within the church. So if y'all would like to come out, we're having stew to go. If you don't want to stay, you can drive through, pick some up, and take it home and eat it with all the welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments?
I have one.
Okay. You got it under the wire there, David.
The Grimes County Go Texas Committee will have a crawfish boil at Fairytown April the 7th. I have tickets for that. If you want to purchase tickets, they're $40 for per ticket.
Are they half price if we purchase them from you?
No.[247.59][247.59](Laughter). And you can get a table for $350 that'll seat 10 people.
10 people for $350, okay. And that is, again, when?
April the 7th.
At the expo?
Yes. And that money is used to fund scholarships that we give out to the graduating seniors in the county in May.
Very good, okay. Are there any other public comments? Last call. Any other public comments? We'll move on to consent agenda items number three, number four, and number five. I do have a question for the treasurer and/or auditor. As we get further on into the year, are we going to be having more and more of these line item transfers? Is that typically the process?
Yes, sir. I do. It depends when we get further in the year. Maybe they have spent their office supplies and new equipment, and so we will transfer money from one to the other. These are budget amendments that are on the agenda today, and that is new money that we did not budget before.
Okay. That's why it's increase, increase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, I make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
There's a motion on the floor to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five by Commissioner Walker. It is seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will now move over to number six, voter registrar, Elections Administrator Becky Duff. Considering, take action to allow Grimes County elections, the temporary use of Iola, Community Center, and B-Dies Community Center as temporary early voting sites from April 23rd, 2018 through May 1st, 2018, due to the special election on May the 5th, 2018, called by the Texas State Governor Greg Abbott. And you can see attachment number six. Ms. Duff?
Your Honor, Commissioners' Court, voters of Grimes County, we just went through the primary. Yay, so everybody 100%. But the state of Texas has granted Grimes County the status of countywide polling places, and that means you can go anywhere to vote. I hope some of y'all have taken advantage of that, where you don't have to go back to your home polling place. And with that being said, as the judge has just told you, that Greg Abbott has called a special election on the May 5th, which is normally city and school elections. That's all we usually deal with. Well, with this being said, now with this countywide polling place status, the city and schools must use the county's polling places. And the early voting, there's none in the very top, and Iola ISD and the city of B-Dies is calling an election, has called an election. So I'm asking the Commissioners to consider the early voting at Iola, and that way, any of you voters can go there and vote. All the ballots will come up, and you can vote there, Iola, and the county, countywide. And so it would be temporary, and I figured the cost on it, it would be approximately close to $1,800 extra for Iola to the county to cover that early voting, and it's the people that run the election, and then the city of B-Dies. It would be convenient for the voters that are looking at those issues, the schools at Iola and the city, that there's candidates and a proposition for B-Dies. So instead of them driving all the way down here to the closest early voting or going into Navasota, they would have the convenience of that early voting being held there.
Two locations.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Iola having any school district or city elections at this period also?
Yes, sir. Iola ISD.
Okay, school board elections?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And then Anderson is having one as well, but they hold it at our early voting place. So that's already taken care of. Navasota ISD is also, has an election, but they're at our polling places. So that this law that's one in effect that's forcing our city and schools to go to our polling places, the counties, then it's already there with Navasota and Anderson.
These county elections take precedent over this?
Yes, sir.
School and cities?
Yes, sir. And it just so happened this May 5th was called by the governor on top of the city and school elections. So that's why I'm asking.
So to be clear, you're saying early voting, you're going to have Iola and the courthouse, those two locations?
And the city of B-Dies.
And B-Dies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And on top of the ISDs, you're saying because of the May 5th special election, you sent this email out that it is an unfunded mandate that's coming down to the local communities, and you said it's costing anywhere between $6,000 to $7,000.
And that is a total. It all, I wrote down for what it would cost us to do that branch temporary one for Iola and the other one for the city of B-Dies. By the time we pay for all the early voting, which that's mandated, the county has to pay it, it will probably be $6,000 total, so.
And these are unfunded mandates?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And we're the bigger entity, county is, so we're just putting that hand out to help all of our city and schools. It's just paying from one hand to the other, and we're already going to be there.
And early voting dates will be April 23rd through May 1st?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
At four locations?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm asking for. If the town, our new town of Flandersville was open and had an election, I'd be asking for that one as well, but they didn't have an election this time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I would like to make the motion to allow Grimes County elections, the temporary use of the Iola Community Center and the B-Dies Community Center as temporary early voting site from April 23rd, 2018, through May 1st, 2018, due to the special election on May 5th called by the Texas State Governor Greg Abbott.
Second. There's a motion on agenda item number six by Commissioner Walker. There's a second by Commissioner Mallon. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Duff.
Your Honor, is it appropriate for me to say, since we're talking about special election, how the drawing went yesterday, or is that?
I think that's okay, acceptable. It's a part of.
Yes, sir. Now, the drawing for the special election, where we have, the drawing for the ballot is Ben Lamond, let's see, was second, but we'll go in order. Cecil White, Ray Webster was one first, and then Ben Lamond was second, and Jill Wolfskill was third. It's going to be on the ballot from May the 5th.
Thank you, ma'am. Agenda item number seven, Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Caswell. Agenda item, considering, take action to fund emergency response team equipment and training. See attachment number seven. Lieutenant, how was the vacation?
Spent a lot of time doing the work.
Thank you for being here this morning.
This is Investigator James Ellis. He'll be up here to go over some of the technical questions y'all may have that I can't answer.
Okay.
What we want to do is basically take the money that was generated through inmate housing contract to fund our emergency response team. As y'all are all aware of, there's been a lot of problems with threats against schools, active school shooters nationwide. Texas has, you know, not missed this. It's happened here in Grimes County already, and we don't have the equipment and training we need to do a proper response at this time. And if we could do this, we could have a much better response if we had the proper training and equipment. I'm asking that you let us use the money that we've generated through our housing contracts with Washington County to fund the equipment training that we need for the officers on the response team.
Is that, what is that money? Where is it normally used?
It's under the 360, which is generated funds. As a matter of fact, Jesse can explain it a lot better than I could, because she's the one who keeps up with where we put the money.
The revenue that we receive is under intergovernmental revenues, which will be in 360s attached. I believe they put the budget analysis of the 360, and so it was approved in court in, I forget how long ago.
Couple of years ago for us to get half immediately for the jail, the other half stayed.
So half for the jail?
For training and overtime for the officers, for schooling and such, for dealers.
And in '17, we did use half, they did use half of the revenue that we did receive. You can see under the amended budget is $8,000. It started, the current started out at zero. The amended was eight, and the activity year-to-date was 16, so that leaves half remaining under current balance.
Okay.
So that would be from '17, and then '18 is also attached, and they have yet to ask for a budget amendment for all of that money. So we've received a total of $24,970 as of today, and that would be half of that, so $12,485. So between there, you could use all of '18 if you do approve. We could just use the '18 to use that portion of it, to cover their expenditures that they're requesting.
And would that cover their, what they're requesting to spend?
I believe so. It was, how much were you requesting?
It was just under $21,000, but we're going to use the 2017, since it's still sitting there, and then half of the '18, because the other half of what we generated so far this year will be used for overtime and training to cover all the requirements under the Sandy Land Act. I am going to be, I can't throw both halves at this. I'm going to have to take some of the money we left in 2017. So I'd like to pull half from what we generated so far in '18, and then what was left over from '17 that we generated, and essentially let Washington County pay for our response team training, because that's money they gave us under that contract.
So then it would just be a budget amendment.
Okay.
And preparing half of it, the eight grand from fund balance, and then the 12 grand from '18.
And all of those transfers and adjustments would be in order?
Yes, it would come before court. If you approve it today, I don't have to bring it back before court, so.
And Judge, the total number for the school and all the equipment on the list y'all have is $20,576.40. We've got it figured out that we're tax exempt down to the county on what we need to set up the train.
Just under the $21,000 then?
Yes, sir.
So John, see if we do approve it today, then audit doesn't have to bring it back?
Correct. And I just wanted to say that there was a time in the past where the sheriff's office had agreement to hold, I think, INS folks at the time, and there became a debate, let's say, between the sheriff and the Commissioners' Court about if the sheriff did that, would the sheriff get those dollars? And the appropriate protocol is the money comes in to unappropriated or to general fund, and then you have the ability to allocate it back to the sheriff's office. That's what we're talking about here. They have done the heavy lifting. In all likelihood, it is probably the intention of the court to allow them the benefit of those dollars, but this is the appropriate protocol to come and ask the court to take the money that went into fund balance or general fund and then allocate it back out to them.
Any other questions or discussion?
I move to approve the funding of emergency response team equipment and training fund 360. My second motion.
There's a motion on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Mallon. There's a second on that motion from Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for getting all the facts.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
When will all of this happen now?
We're going to start setting up the school and get the equipment ordered immediately, since the funds were approved. The sooner the better.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for bringing your technical advisor today.
I thought y'all had some questions for us, but.
Agenda item number eight, building maintenance, Mr. Peeler. Agenda item says, considering, take action to approve contract for Action Partners LLC for Courthouse Project. See attachment eight, A, and B. And this has to do with the refurbishment of the courthouse from the Hurricane Harvey?
Yes, sir. On the attachment, you can see that I'm going, I have went out for my request. We've narrowed it down. Chad Mallon is part of the team, the auditors is part of the team. I have sent all of the documents over to County Attorney. He has lined it up pretty good. I'm asking to approve it on, the money is there for insurance to cover everything that we have. It will not come out of any budget. That's not correct. Try Jesse. It does come out of my Harvey damage budget.
Yes, if it's due to the.
Yes. So we have our own budget for that, and I have enough money in there to cover this without affecting my original, my building maintenance fund budget. I'd like to get it approved so that we can move forward. There's a couple of things that Commissioner Mallon and my team has discussed with acting partners, and on page three, under budget, phase one, task one and two will be treated as a not-to-exceed fee. After that, because we're dealing with 100-year, 100-plus-year-old building, we kind of just have to go with what we find, because we don't know what we're going to find when we dig into it. So we put that so that we don't exceed the fee that they suggested on one, task one and two. Carl Komatsu is the other half of acting partners. He's here with, today, to answer any questions and meet the people that he's going to be working around. So I'd like you to approve this, if at all possible, on the stipulations of.
So this is done in phases, and you say you're phase one, then you're phase two.
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, we're in phase one?
We're not even in phase yet.
Okay.
As soon as you approve this, we'll be phase one. We'll go one, two, and two A.
Okay.
And three, correct? Commissioner Mallon, isn't that what we agreed on?
Okay.
And then kind of reevaluate the prices from there, because these are just estimates until you really know what's going on, what you're going to go into the project.
And I would like to get this approved on so that they can come back, and I can show this to them, and they can make their adjustments on their document, on the contingency of producing a document that John C. is happy with.
And this document is the actual contract, or?
It's the standard architectural.
Yeah, this is the standard.
There is a note in the case at the back that made part of that contract is acting's agreement. So you've got, and acting has terms and use, I think, and then an agreement before that. So they're all part and parcel of the agreement. I just delivered to Mr. Peeler today my notes on it, and some of the highlights, you all probably have experienced this, when somebody throws me a contract and says, is it okay? I usually highlight things that I want to be sure the person who's obligated to carry out the duties or who is aware of the rights to demand from the other side usually will highlight things that are significant to me. In pen, I will usually note the things that are unacceptable to me. And so there are some things that I want to talk with Mr. Peeler and acting's folks and see if this is their final position, but I think what he's asking you, and if you want more time, is it's a contract that's in English, and I say that all the time. I don't want folks to get the impression that I'm the only person that can review a contract and know what the obligations and the rights of the county are. I'm happy to do it, but at the same time, I'm not going to be the guy where the rubber meets the road saying, the contract says you need to do this, or the contract says we're entitled to do that. Somebody else is going to be standing in the courthouse when this repair is made or is not made according to what we want. So all that to say, I intend to sit down with Al and go over the things that I have concerns about and potentially negotiate further about these particular items. If you want more time because you have additional concerns, and I will tell you that standard contract has some blanks in it and has some notes in it, that they've parenthetically made notes to themselves or notes to us, I'm not sure exactly to whom they're directed. So I can assure you, that is not intended to be the final form. And so we've got some talking to do to get it where I want it. If you want to be part of that, or if you want to have input about it, certainly you can be present or participate in that discussion. I think the idea is, rather than continuing to hold off on any progress at all, Al is asking that the court bless this person as the, or this entity as the entity that you're going to contract with, but subject to resolution of my concerns, potentially subject to resolutions of your individual concerns that may be in these various documents that make up the contract.
Are these your strikeouts?
I don't know what, if yours is, no, 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 that's from them. You don't have mine. You don't want mine. You can't read mine.
And this form was used for the PGL contract?
Correct.
Correct. So you've kind of already gone through similar.
And you wanted that as a standard document in the industry.
Yes.
But there are modifications done all the time, and there are modifications proposed in this particular document. There's nothing in that that I find horribly egregious. I just want to fine tune it, if you will, and ask questions about it.
We're using Mr. Peeler's words that our county attorney did a pretty good job on this. Commissioner Mallon, are you comfortable with what you've seen?
Yes.
We've been through this before, just not too long ago, so.
I would just ask, as he's requested, if you approve it, make it subject to or condition upon my approval, and if we run into a roadblock or something that I say I just can't live with, then we'll come back before the court, and it'll be up to you. This is your decision. Your lawyer should tell you when he or she has concerns and/or the legal effect of potential of provisions that are in the document, but ultimately, you as a court of the client, and you can override, you know, my thoughts or concerns anytime.
Sure.
You shouldn't, but you can.
Because you won't come visit us, will you?
Yeah, you'll do the tab on your own. Just go to the maintenance call, come visit.
Well, if we have it our way, you'll be right next door, so it won't be a long trip. Are there any other?
If there's no other questions, I move that we approve the contract with Action Partners contingent upon John C. and Al getting this together.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to have a signatory on this?
I suspect they'll want the judge to be the signatory. It makes it easier. Or you could even authorize, Mr.
Yeah, it asks for not to, I don't care who writes their name down on this, but we were going to use me as the project manager, and they want, the undersigned will serve as the project manager and point of contact for this project. You can be, it doesn't matter, Judge. If you want to sign it, that's fine, and they can run it through me. It doesn't matter.
And that's your, your usual policy is to delegate the authority to one member of the court to sign? You have the ability to delegate to other officials within the county your authority to sign. I will tell you that you begin to see things that are problematic, and Judge, you and I just recently talked about the cell tower, the tower behind the sheriff's office that got signed by an agent in the county or a person in the county, but without going through all of the minutes to ascertain whether he actually got delegated that authority, you don't know whether he had really, he was acting on behalf of the court or just acting on behalf of himself or his own office. So to me, I would prefer that you keep your policy consistent or continue your policy and have a member of the court sign. I'd certainly agree that the contract is going to name Mr. Peeler as the manager, but because you are his direct supervisor or the direct supervisor of his office, seems to me it's simple enough to have you be the.
Give me as a signatory.
Correct.
We'll add you as a signatory.
Add a county judge as a signatory?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion for agenda item number eight by Commissioner Dobianski with the modifications as stated, second by Commissioner Mallon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peeler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Komatsu, for being here. Agenda item number nine, 10, and 11, Roden Bridge Engineer, Harry Walker. Mr. Walker, I'll let you take it from there.
Good morning.
Morning.
Item nine, we have a permit request from Century Lake for installation of a communications cable along County Road 311, runs from the intersection of 341 and about 1,400 feet towards the end of 311. Standard installation, following my procedures, so I'm recommending approval. Standard insulation, following my procedures, so I'm recommending approval.
In which commissioner's precinct is this and this is David's here, Commissioner Dobianski, excuse me.
Our standard is twenty-four inches for, for communication cable.
We'd like to keep them nice and shallow so we can cut them easily.
Yeah.
It's flooding, we have something on top of the ground now.
Well, I was about to say, is that, is that an area where we might be putting the, the ditch in it or changing the depths at any time, or is it?
Probably not substantially. Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy if all the owners actually had twenty-four inches of cover on them.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Is that a motion?
Uh, yes, I, I move to, for approval for the communication blind permit application by Century Link, County Road three eleven.
Yes, seven.
We have a motion on, on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Dobianski. Second by Commissioner Walker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, number ten. Consider and take action to extend the special road use agreement permit for Ellie Meyer's company, Cross Texas Transmission. For an additional ninety days and authorize the county judge as signatory, attachment number ten.
This is an extension of Cross Texas Road Use Permit. Um, the, the permits by state law are only for a ninety day term. They were hoping to have everything cleaned up and, and finished by now, but with the wet winter, uh they didn't quite get that done, so asking for one additional extension. And hoping to be complete uh with all the heavy work by the middle of April. Uh, and there may be some restoration and grass work done beyond that, but uh again, it's, this would be the fourth extension and then probably the last one. I'd also like to say, Sean Mock for Cross Texas is here. I'd like, this is, this is probably the last time you'll see them, uh I'd like to compliment them, they have been very cooperative with us, very good to work with. Have bent over backwards trying to accommodate us, uh all the issues that came up during the course of this project, we appreciate that.
I move to extend the special road use agreement and permit for Ellie Meyer's company, Cross Texas Transmission, for additional ninety days and authorize the county judge as signatory.
No second motion. There's a motion on agenda item number ten by Commissioner Mallett, a second by Commissioner Dobianski. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda item number eleven, consider and po- excuse me, consideration of possible action to authorize Road and Bridge to re-advertise the CR. Our County Road one thirty-two bridge project and to waive the requirement for a bid bond in conjunction with this bid. That's a previous discussion on that.
Yes.
Bid bond, bid with.
Two weeks ago, we presented the bid results on County Road one thirty-two bridge and a recommendation and the action by Corwin to reject the bid. Uh, this is kind of a cleanup item, asking specifically for your permission to go out to rebid the project. And to specifically to request waiver of the requirement for a bid bond on this project. Uh, trying to prove, distinguish county attorney happy with these things.
It's, is this our project or is this on that text dot re- bridge rehabilitation?
This is ours.
This is ours.
Yes. And we are, we are in the process of reworking the bridge design and addressing some of the issues presented by some of the contractors that didn't bid the project. Uh, so we could try and get some more competition this time around.
Judge, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Walker, do you intend to put on the agenda for consideration a change of the policy to stop requiring the bid bond in the circumstance that maybe is a discretion?
We're, we're going to bring back recommendations on all of our bonding requirements.
That's what I, that's what I remember.
Right, this is specific to this one project, it's not a, a policy change that I'm requesting. We'll discuss the policy regarding our bonding requirements separately.
And Judge, you may recall that bid bond, performance bond, payment bond, there are times where the payment and performance are required. Typically, when you're dealing with public works contract, uh this may qualify, but there is not a requirement of bid bond. Um, and I've developed what I affectionately call a cheat sheet and I'd be happy to get it to you if I haven't already. But that's the question that I'm asking is, I, I thought I remembered we were gonna uh take a stab at changing some of the, that, that policy with regard to all three. And so I just wanted to be clear, this is only, the, the request appears to be specifically for this project.
And that's correct, right?
That's fine, yes.
Yes, okay. And this bridge is in which commissioner's precinct? I'm sorry?
Precinct.
Commissioner Mallett's, okay.
This is, this is part of the match, right, from, from another pro- text op project?
Yes, it's, it'll go as a, called a Quipper matching project for one of the other text op bridges, it's all in kind share.
I move to authorize Road and Bridge to re-advertise the County Road one thirty-two bridge project and waive the requirement for a bid bond. For this project.
Seven.
Okay, thank you. On agenda item number eleven, there's a motion by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, Road and Bridge, report, sir?
Road and Bridge, uh the last two weeks, the sunshine helped tremendously, uh we're getting a lot of roads graded and put back to shape after the wet winter. That's been the main focus right now, is trying to get the roads re-graded. We did start uh two bridge replacement projects, one on County Road one forty-one in Bedice. And one on County Road four oh four, uh northeast of Nevisota. We've taken out those old bridge structures, uh and we're, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be bringing in the box culverts that are being. They're coming off the four oh eight bridge project with text op, uh so we're working forward on that, that's been a major effort for us. Greatall's been working, uh assisting in all these efforts, particularly on the bridges. The side ditch crew was up to ninety-five miles of ditch work this year, so they're doing really well. Providing him with the, the means to track his distance electronically instead of having to get out and wheel it has decreased his productivity tremendously, so it's showing up. On the speaking of the four oh eight bridge and the one ninety bridge, which are in text op construction, uh they are very, very finished. We expect sometime in mid, early April, uh they'll be completed and they will reopen those bridges. And then the restoration of those sites are going for a bit longer, but. The decks are poured, they've got the bases for the bridge rails poured, and they basically just have to put the bridge rails and shelves on. And then guardrails and signs, and they'll be done, it'll be nice to have those projects finished.
You're still looking early April?
Yes. Uh, I'd also like to point out, uh with the change of daylight savings time this week, uh Road and Bridge is going back on our summer hours. Uh, the crews will be working four tens and the office staff will be working uh half days on Friday and nine hour days the other four.
Is that starting this week?
This week.
This week.
Yes. We make the switch in conjunction with daylight savings time, so Saturday night is the change, uh so we change as of Monday morning.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Nice to help some sunshine.
And that really is.
Feels good.
And you'll, you'll stay with us for agenda item fifteen.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number twelve, discuss and advise regarding invocation leaders for commissioners' court. I uh just wanted to say to the public that once upon a time, Matt Vaughn, I'm sorry.
I still am, but I've been.
You, he's.
Picked out.
He's, he still am, but if, if you're preacher, you're pastor, you're minister, you're spiritual leader. If you think you would like to have them lead the invocation at commissioners' court, if you would contact me or contact uh Matt Vaughn. We would like to kind of have them schedule or let them know, um and I don't mind leading the invocation. But some of you might get tired of hearing me lead the invocation, so I wanted to throw that out to you as kind of a procedure process of how we'd like to see. Some of the uh Christian leadership in our community and it's up to you to get them to contact us. Then contact Cherie uh in my office and we can get them scheduled, so, all right? And I appreciate your work. James, thank you for being here this morning. Agenda item number thirteen, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory, Mr. Lilly?
I don't see, I have not heard anything from any firefighters and the chiefs.
Thanks for turning green.
Turning green. They have had a few fires they've had to respond to, but they've been able to handle them, so.
When the, the report that I, that Monday report that I get, we had less this week than we did the two weeks before, so.
Fire threat's still moderate, low in our area.
So we'll keep it as is, okay, no action then. Uh, commissioner, agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, item number fourteen, receive any updates on the strategic plan, including numbers ten through thirteen, see attachment number fourteen. Item number ten on the county strategic plan is reactivate the three ninety-one commission, number eleven. Construction of the new county facilities, number twelve, more EMS, number thirteen, retrieve tax dollars from oil drilling for roads. Place those on the agenda just so that we would keep them in front of us and we would continue to discuss those. So that the citizens are aware that we are moving or not moving forward on particular items. And this is not to indicate items one through nine are finished and complete, but we've talked about those in recent weeks, so. I moved it to number ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen. Judge Lamond had reactivate the three ninety-one commission, had his name beside that, so I guess I assumed that for the time be- being. And, and my thoughts on do we reactivate it, if it adds value to what we're trying to do regarding the business of the county and there's value in reactivating it, then I'm all for that. I have put a request uh in the TAC to get their opinion one more time. I plan to spend some time with our county attorney, uh and I know he and I have discussed it, he's discussed it with Judge Lamond, but I'd like your fresh opinion. Uh, in the near term, not today or tomorrow, maybe, but.
It's a little stale, but I'll be happy to offer it once again.
I understand.
But I, I think you may have the high speed rail concern, they have somebody here today, maybe it's on the three ninety-one, I don't know.
I, I have a, I have a colleague.
Okay.
Never mind, he was here about the burn ban apparently.
Sparks from the tracks, right?
Yes. I, you know, Dobianski. Because we work with, with all the cities in the county, uh we, we have interlocal agreements. I think if we move forward with, with the three ninety-one commission, we need to have all of those cities involved if they want to be involved. And I know we've, we've approached them in the past on this, but I'd like to revisit that and, and see if we can get. Send out an invitation to all of them and ask them to join it and because these are the individuals, not individuals, but groups. That take care of the city business throughout the county, we, we, we represent all the people in the county. We put those people on this committee, it will represent the whole county, I feel like. So let's keep that in mind as we move forward with uh if we're gonna revitalize the three ninety-one commission, if that makes sense.
And, and Judge and Commissioner and commissioners, if I could just say, the, the reason that it became inactive is because there weren't two. Entities who were willing to participate.
Right.
And so you can't do it with one and my understanding, no other entity was desirous of participating, so it ran its own course. Um, I would also again, offer that, I think the intention of the three ninety-one is try to collaborate between two governmental entities. To talk about how various projects uh that affect both of them uh will have that impact and uh how uh they can resolve problems together. They can have a seat or seats at the table. There's some real question about uh what exactly the three ninety-one is authorized to do or not authorized to do, and, and you all know that. And then you have an opinion from your general counsel of the Commissioners Association. It says three ninety-ones uh aren't valid unless they are uh based upon the region that's already been set by the governor, which in this case would be the region of BB cog. Uh, not just the region of Grimes County or some portion of Grimes County, so have all of those issues. Um, and then finally, is uh what Commissioner Dobianski just said, reminded me the, the requirement is that two thirds of the members of the board be from the public entities. There is no requirement that the other third be from the citizenry and there's been that discussion and the, the concern, the idea that maybe that's appropriate, but. Uh, from my perspective, I continue to say, if the idea is to have these entities having a seat at the table with whatever projects it may be impacting them. Uh, it may be entirely appropriate to consider three thirds of the members of the board be from the governmental bodies.
Yes.
Uh, and, and because those are the entities being affected, now certainly remains within your authority to decide that you want to do it differently and you want to. Uh, have seats that involve public members, I think that in the past has been part of uh the controversy of the three ninety-one, to be entirely honest, so. I, I, I just threw that out, I, I know I've had that conversation with more than one of you, I want to say that that continues to be my perspective, is that. That deserves some real consideration because then you have those entities pulling together or pulling hopefully in the same direction for the benefit of those entities. Rather than maybe some members that are on there, some uh individual citizens that may not be seeing it necessarily from the perspective of the governmental bodies.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we're not limited, we're not limited to only three entities.
But that's, you're not limited to only three entities, that's correct.
That's the minimum.
Well, it's gotta be at least two entities.
About two, yes.
Gotta be at least two and two thirds of the members have to be governmental or from the governmental bodies.
Right.
Or from the, the um leading bodies or boards of the governmental bodies, but nowhere does it require that, you can't have three thirds of those people.
Right.
So it's, it's been, was the decision of the two entities, uh I guess it was Grimes County and Anderson uh previously?
Todd Mission.
Maybe it was Todd Mission, I, maybe I did that wrong.
Todd Mission.
Okay, and Todd Mission.
Bailed.
Was desirous of the two forty-nine and said, we don't want to be on a commission that is uh an adversary of, of text op in that regard. And so, uh but it was the policy in that three ninety-one between uh Grimes County and Todd Mission. I couldn't remember, I know Anderson was requested and it was a concern over the question of whether they were going to be in or stay in or get out. All, all of that to say that when they walked away or when they want, when Todd Mission wanted out, was just the, the court, but. The specific three ninety-one and the makeup of the body is dictated by the members of that three ninety-one, so it would be your, your, your agreement.
Okay.
One of the uh specific recommendations for future action from our uh strategic plan meetings. Was that we hold a public question and answer session with government, with a government attorney about the powers and limits of the three ninety-one commission. Open to the public and to municipal government officials, so that, that what you're talking about. Um, researching more and sitting down with decent municipalities and school board, if I make no mistake.
I think that's right.
School boards. To, to answer questions for them, because it, it's, it's not always a clear cut answer to the three ninety-one because of. From my understanding where the governor made the lines with the cogs rather than with the local government, so. To sit down and answer some questions where they feel comfortable and everybody feels comfortable moving forward. And they didn't limit it there, it's, it's just uh the idea was to foster an open discussion and openness. About the various arguments on multiple sides of land use issues, so. I think that would please the public if we sit down and have an open, honest discussion with all of the entities here in our Grimes County.
At least invite them to sit through that discussion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Because of what she just said, truly, if Texas Central becomes a, a project, it's gonna definitely affect. it's gonna definitely affect every school district in the county. They need to have a voice in that.
So we, we will continue to research that and, and look forward.
Maybe set a meeting at a future date, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not gonna let it rest because it is a part of the strategic plan. So the citizens put that plan together, so it's important that we move forward. On construction of new county facilities, Commissioner Mallett, do you wanna update us there?
We're, uh, they're still working on, uh, fine tuning a lot of the, uh, space, uh, with the flow for the, to the courts and, um, I should be getting, uh, meeting with them for some of the, uh, actual, uh, mechanical, electrical plumbing, probably next week.
Did all the commissioners get, uh, copied yesterday on the, the, the drawings with the notes?
I just copied who was in that one for that quarter, but I can definitely send, send that out to everybody else and they can kind of get an idea of it.
Right.
In light of, um, you were working with Commissioner Hutzfield on this, do you feel like another member of the court or would you like to wait until the replacement comes to, uh, maybe have someone else from the court help you?
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't hurt to have a, another set of eyes. Commissioner Dobianski's kind of asked if he wa- and then Commissioner Fowth in certain instances too, so as long as all three of us aren't at a meeting together.
It's not foul.
Judge Fowth.
As long as I get to sit in the middle of it, I'm happy.
But, uh, the both have been, you know, kind of helping out a little bit with different, different issues, uh, so I think we could just kind of play it by ear for right now and then make a decision.
Okay, somewhat it is moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you have kind of an idea of when you think we might have the architectural design resolved?
I believe they're still on schedule and I think they mentioned, uh, September.
In your opinion, with construction and all, is there a possibility that that could be accelerated?
Uh, well, with construction, you just never know, I mean, weather plays a big, big key in a lot of that as well, so.
Well, I mean, as long as they're in the design, that, the weather's not gonna affect that.
Oh, I thought you were talking about construction, actually, construction increase is what you're saying, okay. Yeah, uh, now the plans, it's, it's probably gonna be to, as far as the design phase, it, you know, pretty close to September. I don't think they can do it much earlier than that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, item number twelve, more EMS, I didn't note who had that on the strategic plan.
Commissioner Walker.
Commissioner Walker?
So, I'm sorry.
Uh, it was identified, uh, by the strategic plan, uh, the recommendation was that we do a periodic re-evaluation of the need of EMS services, uh, additional EMS services about every five years. So we have begun, um, studying the metrics and, and collecting them from the various entities such as our sheriff's department, um, BB Cog, uh, our nine one one, um, uh, person. They have been getting together, um, call times, call volumes from the various, uh, areas and, um, Cat has done a wonderful job of placing those calls on a map with the times. What we found was we are finding, um, most of the information that we need to collect. We need to set up a better way of collecting information, uh, such as from the time the call comes in to the time that the ambulance leaves, uh, where we have true information, 'cause some of them would say zero time and, well, of course, we knew it took time to get there. So, uh, all of that to say, we have a EMS committee, uh, that we have set up, uh, that understand pre-hospital needs, and what's happening on the ground. There's a specific language that EMS, just like most lawyers or attorneys use, they understand one another and we have called together, um, about five people to help us understand, uh, the language that's being spoken and, and to interpret the information that we've received in the past from Saint Joseph that we felt might, uh, most of us know if we call an ambulance, it takes more than eight minutes in Grimes County to, uh, for them to answer. So we're looking at, uh, things such as, um, staffing, communications, equip- equipment, quality control, finances, inter-agency cooperation, the use of Aramatic, uh, here, uh, and all of those come with a lot of challenges. You know, we're a very lone county, so we realize that many times our ambulances are also being used to transport people from our two, uh, PAC units. So, uh, it's a lot of information and, and you have it on a long term, which is where we need it to, to, to be, because there's a lot of com- information to collect and understand and, 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 but we want you to know we're moving forward with doing that and, and, um, everybody's really excited that works in this arena about that because they, they understand the concerns of our citizens, um, uh, we're dealing with life and death. So they understand that and they want to provide the best service that they can for, uh, the citizens here in our community. So we are in, uh, a working group and we are moving forward with understanding the challenges that we have. And we're taking baby steps to correct the things that we can correct on our end. We also deal, uh, CHI, Saint Joseph is our ambulance providers. We will then go to them and make specific recommendations and from there bring it back to Commissioners Court and, uh, it is budget time coming up and most of the time, uh, this is our tools to maybe get them to see, uh, our stance on what we need for our citizens.
One other thing we need to look at too is, um, moving into interlocal agreements with neighboring counties. Uh, for instance, uh, Rolling Oaks is a subdivision off of, uh, one oh five that you have to go through Montgomery County to get to right out of Dobbin and we've set up an interlocal agreement with that fire station there. They are furnishing ambulance service to that community whenever, uh, somebody is pay, somebody calls nine one one for service out there, they pay that ambulance out, it's a much faster response to them because they're right there. The other thing is the fire department also covers that area from Montgomery County for us at no charge. It's an interlocal agreement. Richards has one with, with a station that they work with out, out of, out of the Richards Volunteer Fire Department.
And, and that, that is in the discussions, we've talked about, uh, Madison being, Madison County being a two-way mutual aid. Montgomery County at this particular time doesn't respond, uh, because of some other problems, but they have to go through the supervisor there at Saint Joseph. We're trying to see how we can, um, like you say, enter into agreements to where we don't have to find that supervisor to say, okay, yes, we can go ahead and call for mutual aid. So those are some of the things they are looking at and, um, so they're being, being very thorough and, uh, it was much more than what we as a Commissioners Court could understand. With them being in the field, they understand what needs to happen and, um, we will be working on that, Commissioner Dobianski.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item number thirteen, retrieve tax dollars from oil drilling for roads.
Okay, uh, Mr. Walker and I have contacted, what was the company that's drilling up in the northeast corner?
ETX.
ETX, uh, several last year sometime and sat down with them before they came in to drill and they have, uh, come forth with, with additional funding for us to upgrade the roads that they're using. Uh, we require them to, to do that. Uh, we have three pipelines which are gonna be coming through the county shortly. We're talking, he and I are both talking to, uh, those companies, uh, currently on, on setting up, a meeting with them to indicate the roads that they'll be able to use bringing those loads in, uh, and so forth. And they, they will be paying for any damages they, they cause on the roads and so forth. So we, uh, that's been a short-term deal and, and, you know, the past year, we've already worked out some agreements with some of them, so we will continue to do that.
Okay.
And recently, didn't we just approve dollars that brought in from damages to the roads?
Yes, we've, uh, we've collected quite a bit of money from both, uh, across Texas that, that was here and Center Point for road damages. Under the new road use permit, uh, that y'all adopted last spring, uh, we have a mechanism now for all of these major projects coming in, uh, will be coming before the court. They'll have to get a road use permit and we'll have an opportunity to recoup the damages that they do. ETX, the drilling company that Commissioner mentioned, has provided rock for us to put on the roads. Across Texas and Center Point have provided checks so we could do the work ourselves. Works either way, but we have a, a formal mechanism in place now to ensure that anybody that's bringing in overweight loads is required to compensate the county for any damages they do.
Well, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, sir. Cherie, do we have, do you have the ability on the strategic plan, as we have it listed on the website? Is there a way they could, if they clicked on item ten and they see reactivate three ninety-one commission, is there a way to have a page behind it where it somewhat, where it might say what we're doing or like when Commissioner Walker was talking about on more EMS? That's kind of vague, but people might say, well, what are they doing with more EMS? Commissioner Walker might have a report that the committee's meeting and these are the three, four, five items we're talking about.
Absolutely, whatever you want, I'm gonna make it happen.
So that, so that would be easy to have some type of a flip the page and review?
Just a hyperlink where you click it and another window pops up with an explanation of, or an update, like a more, instead of saying still in progress or we're now in one to three years now, yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
No problem, whatever you want to do, just let me know.
Cool, is that, would that, do you think that would be beneficial court for us to have that? Okay, we'll, we'll work with you on that.
I can get it.
Okay.
Very good, all right. Agenda item number fifteen, discuss concerns of Grimes County citizen Martin Thomas regarding rainwater runoff. It is expected that the court will convene a closed meeting pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point oh seven one, as we consult with our attorney. So we're going to do that and we would ask, uh, everyone that is not a member of the court to excuse themselves. And if you don't come back, thank you for being here.